I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Shreveport-Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddo.mpc.com. All ZBA decisions on variances to zoning within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal due district court. All ZBA decisions on special exception uses within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to city council. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the city council about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The Zoning Board of Appeals values your testimony today and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. What do we hear from the board regarding the approval of the minutes from the June 21st meeting of 2023?
Move to approve the June 21st meeting, minutes?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Woods. Please open the voting and please vote. We're not working again. Sorry, is this something we can fix or should we voice vote? All right. Yeah, there we go. Motion carries four and one out of the room. All right, case number 2313 VAC, 2804 Marty Lane.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Nathan Hutchings, 2804 Marty Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present my case regarding my application for variance to Article 7, Section 7.3A regarding the placement of a detached garage on the street side of my property. My wife and I purchased this property in the fall of 2021, excuse me, with the vision of improving what was a neglected and dilapidated property into one that my wife, children, grandchildren could enjoy for the remainder of our lifetime and hopefully for my children and grandchildren much longer than that. The commentary provided in the ZBA staff report dated July 19th, 2023, addresses three sections of the UDC regarding Section 16.5 EA, the strict application of the terms of the code will result in undue hardship unless specific relief request is granted. In that staff report, it says that the strict application of the code does in fact cause undue hardship due to the fact that the properties on frontage has frontaged across lake. The report goes on to say that we could potentially do a bunch of dirt work and modify the elevation of the property such to make some other portion of the property suitable for placement of the garage. The report also states that it becomes a matter of what defines a slope as being too steep to develop or modify. The staff suggests the ability to change the elevation of the property is something that can be achieved. The staff report regarding 16.5 EB, which is regarding the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances inherent to the subject property and not from the personal situation the owner states, it would have been known, a known factor during the acquisition of the property as well as other properties in proximity to it, that it was in a flood zone and will always have the potential problem of flooding, making portions of the property unavailable for use unless a change in elevation occurred. And then regarding Section 16.5 EC, and that is if the variance granted, it will not alter the essential character of the locality, the report states, it would not be out of place in this neighborhood, added that, if the storage shed was placed in this location so close to the road and due to it being on a dead end road. It then goes on to say that there have been others in the neighborhood, however, who don't have an accessory structure in their front yard despite similar stormwater challenges. In support of my application today, I have with me representatives of all of the neighboring properties on Marty Lane. I have a contractor with lots of experience in building homes, Mr. Joey Burrows of B&amp;B Construction. I also have a letter from my surveyor, Mr. Randall Hilton, who's a very well-respected land surveyor who has conducted work on my property when we first bought it regarding the property lines and subdivision. So in response to the staff's comments, I offer the following counterpoints for the board to consider. As shown in the drainage survey that I submitted with my original application, which was completed by the civil engineering firm here in town, Morton Associates, a significant portion of my property is located within the flood plain. It has a large drainage area that conveys the vast majority of the stormwater runoff, all of Rising Road, and plus over a mile southward down Pines Road. All of that water from that whole area, which is over 60 acres of lowland drainage, conveys through my property into Cross Lake. During significant rainfall events, the ditch cannot contain the amount of water that is conveyed, which results in temporary flooding of the areas adjacent to the drainage ditch, even when the lake is well within its banks. So as noted by the staff report, I was in fact aware that parts of the property were in the flood plain when I purchased it, and I was willing to accept the occasional and rare flooding that occurs when the lake is out of the banks. I had no means to assess the temporary flooding that occurs during rainfall events for two reasons. First, when we were buying the property, the wooded area that abuts the drainage ditch was 100% untreasurable. It had 20 or 30 years of overgrowth vegetation in it. I had no way to get in there while we were assessing the property during the, when we were purchasing it. Secondly, I was never on the property when it rained, so I was never able to witness that when we first bought the property. The temporary flooding is the result of the fact there are three culverts that convey, that converge together at the corner of my property. Those culverts are in significant disrepair, and they also abut a lift station. If you were able to come out and see the property, you may have seen that that area is badly washed out, and the amount of water coming through there, the stormwater system was just underdesigned to accommodate it. I spent thousands of dollars cleaning the ditch past the servitude to try to eliminate all debris I could and make sure that there was maximum drainage through there, and I still can't manage to contain the amount of water that comes down that ditch within it. It would cost a lot more money to do that. With respect to the staff's report stating that all of the other neighbors with similar drainage issues didn't put an accessory structure in their front yard, I offer these comments. First, no one else's property within a mile of my property takes as much drainage water as my property does. So the statement that others have managed the same issue is simply not a fair comparison. Likewise, the topology and shape of the neighborhood varies widely. The lot sizes are different, elevations are different. There's just not simply a one-size-fits-all solution that would say, in this property, it makes sense, in this property, you know, it would have to be a specialized situation because some houses could accommodate said structure, some houses cannot. I have one of those that cannot. Similarly, it's seems a little bit of a general overgeneralization to assume that all property owners either want or need an accessory structure in the front of the yard. I found that comment to be just somewhat unvalidated because I doubt that the committee had time to review every property owner's plan in the whole neighborhood as to whether or not they needed a front yard structure or not. But I've paid for professional assessments. This isn't just my opinion. So I've paid for a civil engineering firm to review the property. I've paid for a contractor to do work on that property and a land surveyor before making the decision to propose the location that was in the application. In consultation with those three professionals, I got the same result. The most logical place to put this is in the proposed location, which is out of the flood plain, it's connected to the entrance and egress, it's easy to access from the entrance and egress, and it's consistent with all the neighbors, that four of the six lots on that, on that dead end have an accessory structure in the front yard. So in order to accommodate the staff's suggestion of an offset side location, there is simply too much to overcome. So first and foremost, the lot is a Pentagon. So there's no place other than on the lake side of the house that would allow us, that would not be visible from either Rising Road or Marty Lane, that would not be considered in front of the house. It would have to, the only place that would not be in front of the house would be on the back of the house, which would put it between the lake and the house, which is extremely undesirable for a lake house. Secondly, the, most people that live on the lake consider their backyard, what you would call the backyard, their front yard. You buy a lake house because of lakefront property. You spend way more time on that side of the house than you do on the street side. The elevation change from the side of my house toward the lake, that picture actually right there was pretty good. If you look to the right of the house up there, the elevation change from there to the rest of the yard where it goes into the lake is nine feet high, over 25 feet of walking distance. To build a pad that would accommodate this garage would take thousands of yards of dirt, not hundreds, not a truckload, not a little bit of excavating, it's thousands of yards. I have my builder here to attest to that effect, as does Mr. Hilton's letter. So if I may, I would like to read the letter from Mr. Hilton, also, if you don't mind, you can put that on the overhead.
Dr. Hutchings, just a little over one minute.
One minute left?
1:15.
Okay. All right. The high notes here are, "The alternate locations exceed the reasonable amounts of fill compaction and construction for entrance and egress, not to mention the proximity, vertical height difference to the primary residence." His conclusion is he sees no other location on this property suitable to place the garage without an inordinate amount of fill and construction cost that would be excessively expensive and create secondary issues with respect to drainage because of how much water travels across my property. So I submit that letter for your consideration. I also have Mr. Burrows and Mr. Vegan will gladly speak on behalf of, as my builder in my neighborhood. I would like to say this, the fact that we're a dead-end street, four of the six neighbors have accessory structures in their front yards, there's no public access to this area. Rising Road is a loop that comes off of Lake Shore Drive. There's very little public traffic on that, and then Marty Lane is a dead end with only four lots on it. Every other lot adjacent to me, especially the ones that directly abut my property, all have accessory structures in their front yard. It's not like this would be an eyesore, plus the construction will be consistent in the style of the house which you just saw. It'll be very elegant. This is not going to be a shack, okay? So I appreciate your time very much. I know how hard your job is. I know that the staff's job is very hard. It's difficult to look at all the nuances of all these properties. I respectfully request that you consider these counterpoints to the staff recommendation and approve my variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Dr. Hutchings? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 23-13 VAC? Just a reminder that subsequent speakers have a three-minute time limit.
Okay. Joey Burrows, B&amp;B Construction, 3831 Coleman Road, Benton, Louisiana. Just here to ask y'all for the variance on that. For us to put the shop on the hill where it drops nine feet, we're probably looking at anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000 in dirt just to be able to put it on the property. And it's just going to be a hardship for him. Then we'll still have to get a driveway to it, and so he's probably to put up a $25,000 building, he's going to probably spend 50 in the dirt work, you know? So I'm just here to, for y'all's grace. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burrows? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case 23-13 VAC?
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Vegan, and I live at 2805, Mr. Hutchings lives at 2804. If I had a football...
Sir, full mailing address, please.
Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. If I had a football, I could throw the football from my front yard, or what we consider our backyards, what everybody else considers a front yard, and hit the building that he's trying to build. If I put a little arm into it, I can hit his house. So I'm looking exactly at what he's trying to do and where he's trying to do it. And I have, in communication with all the neighbors on Marty Lane, all of us are supportive of this variance. There's no question. I'm one of the owners of the property that has a structure what is considered in our front yard, so I'm one of those people. I also talked to Mr. John Harris, who's on the other side of Mr. Hutchings' property. He and Mr. Harris shared 900 to 1,000 feet of property line. Mr. Harris has no concern at all. I too appreciate hearing you guys and all the work that you do, and I come from a position of being a former member of this board and a former chairman of this board, but that was all before the turn of the century. But I appreciate the work, and I'm glad you come out and see this, see the properties and the work that you do, and I understand this quite well because I was on the ZBA myself for 10 years. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I made it in three minutes, did I not?
You did. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vegan?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark?
May I just say hello to Dr. Vegan? I guess I'm dating myself again because I was here when he was chair of the ZBA, and it's really wonderful to see you and the great service that you provided for the city and the parish.
This was a very rewarding job to do. It's citizens making decisions about citizens' property and how we're going to have neighborhoods and how we're going to have, you know, business districts. It's you, the citizens, that do it. It was I that was doing it, and I thought it was a very, very rewarding position, and thank you for remembering. Your memory is better than mine. Maybe I'm dating myself.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 23-13 VAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 23-13 VAC? What do we hear?
I move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Brandon, second by Mr. Hendricks. Any discussion? Please open for voting. There we go. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
One last comment, Mr. Chair, if you would allow, and I promise to be quiet the rest of the meeting.
Carry on, Mr. Clark.
Dr. Hutchings gave a very eloquent presentation, but we had already been looking at land around the country that is on lakefront properties and considering making recommendations to the MPC board to allow accessory buildings in the front yard. But I just wanted the citizens, I met a wonderful citizen that I turned in their driveway yesterday, and they didn't run me out, but I wanted the, there he is, that we have considered that, we respect that situation and the problems that are associated with that situation, and we are hopefully going to be doing something to correct it.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, that brings us to case 23-16 VAC, 300 West 84th Street.
I'm giving this gentleman a copy of the statement I wish to read.
Sure.
And I'm Ted Bennett. I represent Kenyon Enterprises, K developers, and Piggly Wiggly for variance for liquor zoning variance for 300 West 84th Street.
Sir, I need a mailing address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 543 South Main Street, Spring Hill, Louisiana, 71075.
Thank you very much.
And as I was saying, I'm here asking for a liquor variance for 300 West 84th Street. It's on the northeast corner of Lindwood Avenue and West 84th Street. And like I say, I gave this gentleman a statement that you might read along with me because I'm not an eloquent speaker like the gentleman that just preceded me. But we applied for a variance for this location, and the staff determined sufficient hardship was not established, and we would respectfully challenge that determination. While the UDC requirements are designed to protect neighborhoods, Piggly Wiggly feels that the unforeseen circumstances results in the opposite effect. The recently so-called grocery store liquor sales ordinance was enacted to enable grocery stores to provide high alcohol content beverages to their customers as a service similar to other towns and cities in Louisiana. The UDC requirements has written favor large corporations and large box grocery retailers and has the effect of discriminating against the smaller locally-owned neighborhood retailers. The result also manifests in allowing variances to big-box retailers as they are not located in close proximity to neighborhoods. It is our understanding large big-box retailers have been granted variances to the 1,000-foot rule from other retailers to foster competition. Big-box and large food retailers tend to be located in shopping centers and are destination shopper retailers. Customers leave their neighborhood and travel to these locations due to possible better selection, perceived lower pricing, and items not allowed to be carried by neighborhood stores. Allowing large retailers to sell high alcohol content beverages and deny the same sales to locally-owned grocery retailers are damaging, has damaging spiral effects. It also creates destination shoppers on a more frequent basis. Destination shopper does not just purchase a high alcohol content beverage not offered at the neighborhood store, he also purchases the remainder of his major food requirements, leaving the local grocer to provide only forgotten or small fill-in items. The loss of the high alcohol sale, usually less than 2% of total purchases, is not really a problem, but the other 98% of those purchases that are taken from us is a problem. Piggly Wiggly, the locally-owned neighborhood store, loses volume due to unavailable products. The stores are forced to raise prices to cover expenses that are constantly increasing. Increased pricing causes more destination shopping. Higher pricing has the greatest impact on the elderly, lower-income households, and residents with no or limited transportation. Loss of volume to the neighborhood store also impacts employment opportunities for those in the neighborhood with no or limited transportation. With the huge increase in utility and transportation costs in today's market, locally-owned smaller retailers are being forced to close further degrading services, to close further degrading services to the neighborhood. Piggly Wiggly has had previous experience with stores and communities that were, and we were, where we were initially denied high alcohol content licenses. These stores lost some 16% of total sales volume. A 16% loss of income is of course a devastating hardship to any business or household. After a lengthy appeals process in one location and a favorable variance resounding process in another, these stores were granted high alcohol content licenses. Over a period of three months, the lost volume in these stores returned with a slight increase in sales in one location. Piggly Wiggly doesn't expect to increase sales with a high alcohol content license. The present volume needs to be maintained to cover increased expenses, provide a low-cost grocery outlet to the neighborhood, and protect employment in this neighborhood. This location was properly posted as a high alcohol content as regarded the state of Louisiana, and the ATC received no objections for this site. This location was properly advertised three times in local publications as a high alcohol content location as required by the state of Louisiana, and the ATC received no objections for the sale for this site. In summary, the UDC requirements essentially prohibits neighborhood grocery stores from remaining competitive by not allowing liquor sales. As a result, local residents with no transportation are deprived of low and stable food pricing. The neighborhood store has to increase prices due to loss of volume, and the store may be forced to close. Result, of course, would be a financial hardship on Piggly Wiggly, the smaller retailer, but most of all would be a terrible hardship on the neighborhood residents. There would be no negative impact to the neighborhood if a variance were granted as the store already has a low content alcohol license. The hardship being created is beyond our control and is a direct result of the new UDC requirements, and Piggly Wiggly respectfully requests a variance of the requirements in order to foster and not limit competition. I greatly appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any questions from the board for Mr. Bennett?
I have a question.
Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Bennett, let me make sure I'm hearing you correctly. You're saying if you're not granted the ability to sell high alcohol content products, is that going to hurt you?
Oh, yes. There's an old saying in our business where a person buys their beer, they buy their milk.
Okay, I got, okay. My next question is this, is there any other store in the area other than, what's the other liquor store that's over here?
I think Thirsty's or somebody's in that.
Is there any other store other than Thrifty that sells alcohol in your area?
Well, we have a beer and wine license, and the family dollar next door to us has a beer and wine license.
Okay. Is there any other grocery store in the area that's a competition to you?
No, not in that isolated neighborhood. You have to drive, like I say, it becomes a destination drive out of that neighborhood over to, I guess, I'm not sure exactly, be Walmart or probably Brookshires.
Okay. So I guess my concern is...
It's about two or three miles over there.
Right. My concern is you saying that it's going to hurt your business. Your business has been there for a number of years, right?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Has it suffered at all?
Well, at this, at this point, we haven't, I don't think we've seen enough of the licensing going on to hurt us. We have had a decrease in volume there, but our experience, like in Mendon, Louisiana, when they opened that up to liquor sales, we were denied a permit. Our business really suffered. And when, and when we finally did get a permit after legal action that we had to take, our business came back, and it did grow a little, but it kept people in the neighborhood.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Brandon?
I just had a, maybe I'm not quite understanding this, but Thrifty has been in the next block to you for all these years, and now the fact that you're not going to be able to get a liquor license is going to hurt your business?
Well, the way I would address that, Thrifty had, they had their business, and we had our business, but now other locations have been able to mix that business, which puts pressure on our business, taking people out from our business to go buy their milk, bread, eggs, and that's where they're also going to buy their liquor, and it's going to hurt Thirsty's, too, no doubt about it.
All right, any more questions, Mr. Bennett? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case 23-16 VAC? Anyone here wish to speak against this case?
Mr. Clark and to the board and to everybody...
Uh, Mr. Clark, and to the board, and to everybody, um, I bid you a great day. My name is Timothy Jones. I am pastor of the Peace Forest Missionary Baptist Church, located at eighty-two hundred St. Vincent Avenue. I reside at one oh four Colonel A.P. Coons, Shreveport, seven eleven fifteen. I stand in objection to this, um, liquor license or, or this variance, as many of our community partners have declared that we don't want any more liquor stores of any type in Cedar Grove. Uh, where this, uh, store is, um, it's within a thousand feet of several churches. It's within a thousand feet of at least three childcare centers, preschools, or daycares. In fact, uh, in our church, there is a learning center. If you'll look at, if you'll look at this map, this is the property being discussed. This is the property that our, where our church is. But in addition to that, our church owns property about two hundred feet behind this facility with plans for expansion. Another congregation owns the property next door with an intent to build a church building there. There's a, there's a church you could literally throw a rock at across the street, the Cedar Grove Church, across the street from this facility. To put it in better perspective, corner to corner, if you go to the corner of our property, the corner of their property, it may not be two hundred feet. So, we stand in complete objection. I mean, you can walk to several establishments in our community, I don't know how many there are, but within walking distance, there are any number of facilities where you can, um, purchase, um, high alcohol content products or, or the like. And, uh, I do appreciate Piggly Wiggly for being in the community, uh, but the people who live in our community are appreciative for the food. We didn't need another place to buy any liquor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against case twenty-three dash sixteen?
Hello, Chairman Clark, members of the MPC. Thank you so much for hearing me today. My name is Tracy Tupe, uh, four five one Railsback Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero six. Um, I have three minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I try to be brief. Since nineteen sixty-one, we as responsible business owners, my dad and his original partner started Thrifty Discount Liquor and Wine Company, have complied with all regulations in place in order for us, as business owners, to operate. The MPC, as far as we can tell, spent a lot of time and a lot of money, uh, coming up with the new guidelines that are now in place. Um, and I sat with, in every city council meeting, um, at the time that this was approved. Uh, at the time, I spoke to Chairman Clark and Mr. Jean on the topic several times as well. I can't speak for them, but I would assume the guidelines they generated, uh, after spending so much time and money, uh, on doing this were not pulled out of thin air. Our company has built a business around the guidelines that were in place, uh, at the time that we started our business. Now, new businesses are getting the approval to bypass the MPC seemingly by the MPC, which is, uh, very difficult for us as local operators to see. Uh, we were denied stores, uh, under the old regulations, even though we were well within the regulations at the time, uh, and, uh, new stores seem to be able to, uh, open up, uh, regardless of what the regulations are. Further, it was general consensus of the city council at the time that this was passed, uh, that the sale of high alcohol content, uh, items at grocery stores and convenience stores was certainly not the desire of passing these new MPC guidelines. Moreover, it seems that the new guidelines aren't even being regulated. There is a Kroger on Yury with a gas station that now has liquor, uh, and as far as we understand it, uh, gas stations are not supposed to have liquor. Uh, there's another gas station, uh, in South Shreveport off Norris Ferry that, uh, not only has liquor, but has expanded the liquor footprint, which is also a gas station. It is difficult, as a local business owner, operator, who has always complied with the guidelines, to see other non-local business owners to get to operate in a fashion that we have never done. It was also pointed out in the city council meetings that led to the new MPC guidelines and regulations, uh, that most states do not even allow liquor or how high alcohol content items to allowed in grocery stores at all. Aside from that, uh, as a small business operator, one thing I would mention is that, uh, all of our clerks are, uh, to be in compliance have to have an ABO card, therefore they have to know how to sell high alcohol contents to customers. Uh, that can only be controlled in a small environment, uh, as opposed to larger grocery stores that are obviously moving to self-checkout counters where no one's there to even oversee the, the register, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tupe.
Thank you for hearing me today.
Any questions for Mr. Tupe? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against case twenty-three dash sixteen? Mr. Bennett, you have a, uh, opportunity for rebuttal if you desire one?
Yes. In the past, we've always been given zoning clearance for distance from churches, and that neighborhood store, that we were always, uh, outside the three-hundred-foot limit, and, uh, all of our employees are ABO-qualified. It's required by the city of Shreveport that everyone that works where they sell any type of alcohol, whether it be, uh, low volume percent or high volume percent, are required to have ABO licenses. All of the people that own businesses, small businesses, all have to be cleared by the FBI and the state police to obtain a, a state liquor license, where some of the big corporations, they get away with just one person at, uh, headquarters being cleared. And so, I just wanted to make clear that, you know, we've always followed the regulations. We operate, uh, liquor stores, I mean, uh, supermarkets in four states, and all of those states except for Texas, we do operate liquor licenses in those stores, and we do have beer and wine licenses in our Texas store.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Bennett? All right, what do we hear?
I'm moved to deny.
Second.
All right, motion to deny by Mr. Marshall. Second by Mr. Brannon. Uh, Mr. Marshall, would you mind going on record with some justification or comment?
No.
Okay.
Could you do the comment?
Yes.
I, I believe that this issue is, is going to be coming up multiple times again in the future, and I think there, the, one of the deciding factors for me is going to be, uh, small businesses who follow the rules for many years and have always been in compliance.
That there needed to be a predictable outcome to liquor applications, because as you know, in the past, we had special exception use approvals coming before this board in public hearings, and a board made a decision, and not necessarily the people that had to live in the neighborhood made those type decisions. So, I think that the city council, uh, asked us to do this research, asked us to come up with recommendations for regulating liquor sales in neighborhoods, and I think that we have come up with a very good ordinance, uh, for the city of Shreveport. Now, what works in other towns, uh, is not important to us. We are trying to improve life and the quality of life in the city of Shreveport, and we feel very strongly that we've done so. And we have not prohibited liquor sales when they meet certain spacing requirements, uh, in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any further comments from the board before we vote? All right, the motion on the floor is to deny by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Brannon. If there's no further discussion, please open for voting.
Yes, it's to deny, correct.
Yes, and, uh, just for information, a yes vote is to deny. Oh. Yes. Right, all right, so we'll, we'll take a voice vote. So, all, all in favor of denial, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous, so the motion to deny passes unanimously. Case number twenty-three dash nineteen, BAC. Two-four-five-three Rory Road. Harris or Johnson, here they come.
First, I want to say it's an honor to be here, to meet with you guys, um, about this situation, but it's, it's, it's not as difficult as what I've been hearing in the, in the, in the past, so this should be pretty quick. What I'm trying to get is.
Interrupt you first, I need, need your full name.
Willie Dexter Harris.
And mailing address.
Thirty-three zero-three Darian Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero-nine.
All right, thank you very much. Please continue.
Okay. Uh, as I say, I won't take any, much more of your time, because all I'm asking is for a special exemption to put a mobile home on a family, piece of family property on the railroad, on railroad on the MLK area.
All right, any questions for Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, you, oh, yes, I do.
Mr. Woods?
You own the property, and you putting a mobile home there to do what?
It is, it is family property, and I'm putting a mobile home there for residency.
Are you living there, or?
Yes, sir. I will be living there. And, um, I feel that I've done everything that was required as far as zoning, you know, to be able to acquire the permit, to be able to move the property, because I have everything that was asked of me. I've spoken with, you know, members of your committee, and I've, I've done everything that was required to make this possible.
Okay. All right, any further questions for Mr. Harris? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case twenty-three dash nineteen? Anyone wish to speak against case twenty-three dash nineteen? What do we hear?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brannon, second by Mr. Hendricks to approve. Are we back on, uh, on track, Charlie?
Yes.
All right, please open for voting if there's no discussion.
Mr. Brannon?
Mr. Brannon didn't record. Did it take? Tap it, there you go.
Still didn't.
Light it up. Is, is his recording?
No.
All right, so just, uh, for backup, we'll go ahead and take another voice vote. All in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. That's a unanimous vote. Motion approved, passes. All right, case twenty-three dash twenty, thirty-seven twenty-three Lake Shore Drive.
Ted Bennett, representing Piggly Wiggly, uh, five forty-three South Main Street, Spring Hill, Louisiana, seven one oh seven five. And basically, I have the same presentation as I had for the one on Linwood Avenue, and, and this location is at thirty-seven twenty-three Lake Shore Drive. It's the southwest corner of Lake Shore Drive and Jewella Avenue. There are no other liquor establishments in that area. And that, I guess that's about all I can say, except what I said in the previous presentation.
All right, any questions on this location and case, uh, from the board for Mr. Bennett? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case twenty-three dash twenty? Anyone here wish to speak against this case?
Uh, my name is Tracy Tupe, Thrifty Discount Liquor and Wine Company, um, four five one Railsback Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero six. Um, again, I, I would have the same rebuttal, uh, to this location, uh, as I did before, uh, regardless of whether or not there is another liquor establishment in the area. Uh, to me, the, the point question here is whether or not it is in compliance with the MPC guidelines. And I don't know the answer to that question, but that would be my question to this location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Tupe? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against case twenty-three dash twenty? What do we hear?
I'm moved to deny.
Second.
Mr. Woods? Motion to deny, second by Mr. Marshall. Any comments from the board? All right, please open for voting.
Voting for yes.
Yes. A yes is vote to deny. Everybody report?
I tried.
All right, so, everyone voting in favor of denial, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Case number twenty-three dash seventeen, BAC. One-six-three-seven Laurel Street. Mary Lee Brown?
Mary Lee Brown, sixteen twenty-seven Laurel Street, seven eleven oh three, and I'm trying to get a mobile home put up on my property.
All right, and I guess the only question I have is, uh, you understand about connect, uh, combining by subdivision the two lots into one?
Right.
Okay. Any, uh, questions for Ms. Brown from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for twenty-three dash seventeen? Anyone wish to speak against this case?
My name's Jason Russell. My mailing address, ninety-six twenty-one Fern Cliff Road, Bethany, Louisiana, seven one zero zero seven. I am representing a client of mine. I'm a real estate agent, and this client of mine was a investor, a young investor out of California. She purchased a rental house over on Laurel Street, and she would like to oppose the placement. I have a letter from her that I'm just going to read word for word so that there's no-
Sure.
Says, July eighteenth, to whom it may concern, my name is Lindsay McLagan. I am writing this letter today in opposition to Mary Lee Brown's request for special exemption to use sixteen thirty-seven Laurel Street for a manufactured home. I purchased seventeen twenty-three Laurel Street only about two months ago. As a young landlord, a downturn of this neighborhood would dramatically impact the value of my investment. In many cases, in win zone appropriately, there is nothing wrong with manufactured homes. I intentionally purchased this property with the understanding that no manufactured homes are permitted. Thank you for hearing my letter in opposition to placing a manufactured home.
Jamari, could you put up the, the map, the area map? And if you can, Mr. Russell, can you just, do we have the larger one? The, yeah. Can you show us the property that your client has?
I can't tell from that. It's, I have the address is seventeen twenty-three. I don't, I believe it's-
She's got to be in the next blot.
She was included in the, the letter that was sent out for the-
I'm just curious if she's directly next door?
No.
What is her address?
Seventeen twenty-three Laurel.
Yeah, so she's the next blot.
I believe it's across the street, too.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, you have an opportunity for rebuttal if you desire.
Can I speak for Ms. Brown?
You can, you can speak as her rebuttal if you find.
My name's Edward Mooney, thirty-four oh two Manchester Drive, Bossier City, LA, seven eleven eleven. I'm, for the past few months, I've been trying to help Ms. Mary figure out a way to get into a new home. She had some challenges as far as even being able to get financing and everything, and through the course of our short time together, you know, and I, this is going to sound funny coming from a salesperson, but I've grown to understand Ms. Brown's situation, and I desperately want to help her. You know, the home that's there now has been there for a very long time, and it's not in the best shape in the world. And she's living there, and she has, you know, one of her granddaughters living there who sometimes periodically has her grandchild there. And as far as Ms. Mary Brown paying an obscene amount of money in electric bills because of, you know, the, the dateness of her house, and also the condition of leaks and electrical problems, you know, it's not just a, hey, I want to put a home there, it's a, hey, I need to put a home there, and I just wanted the board to see the situation, and it's not just a, you know, hey, I want to put a manufactured home in the city limits of Shreveport. It's, hey, I want a, a home that's going to last me the rest of my years, that's going to be affordable when it comes to electricity, and that's going to be a place that I can stay without having to worry about leaks or electrical problems. So I just, I didn't think Ms. Mary kind of indulged herself in letting y'all know the situation, but I wanted to let y'all know for.
Thank you very much. I would also just, just for the record, go on to say that once again, we have received information time and again about, that dispels the notion that manufactured homes bring down property values. That's simply not borne out by surveys and studies and the facts of the situation. Also, if given the opportunity for someone to be a homeowner and live in that home, I'm going to, I'm going to always vote for that person over an absentee landlord who's just in it for an investment and purely business interest. So with that being said, any comments from the board?
No. Mr. Chair, I echo your sentiments regarding your comments. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. What do we hear?
I move to approve.
I second.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Hendrix. Please open for voting. We'll try this again. There it goes. Oh, there's work. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Brown. Oh. Did that record his vote?
It did.
Okay, he has five.
We have five votes.
He has five votes.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we're good. All right, that brings us to the close of our public hearing. Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Clark, do you have any comments?
I always like to, to allow if there are public comments before I make my comments, Mr. Chair, and I see that one person left in the chambers.
I can't see anyone from my vantage points.
No, actually, uh, actually, I'm, we're in today's, oh.
I didn't, you were hiding in the corner over there. Just state your name and mailing address for us.
Right, Glenda Graves, Shreveport, well, ten thirty-five Wilkinson Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. This is my first time attending, so just knowing order about these meetings. I am very intentional about coming to these meetings because I do have some ideas for Shreveport, being born and raised here, so I just wanted to see how it goes and maybe see more of me.
Thank you for your presence, and anytime you wish to speak, now is the point in the meeting. If you have comments to make, you can come at this time and make them.
Right, thank you. I do come to city council meetings, I've just never been to this meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark?
No, sir, I, I, I don't have any comments. I, I would like to share that today did show that all of the work that we did with trying to streamline, trying to better concentrate, trying to improve the quality of life in the inner-city neighborhood is working. It is, it is just important to realize that there have been national presentations made about the negative impacts of liquor stores in, in certain neighborhoods, not to make my friend angry over there, but there have been, if they are not properly managed, and if they are allowed to, allow laundering and other criminal type activities to occur. So that was why we came up with the recommendations to the MPC board, and Thrifty Liquor and Cuban Liquor were part of those processes, and they could have fought the, the adoption of this ordinance, and they agreed to not fight the adoption of the ordinance in order to try to protect some neighborhoods that were truly suffering. So I just wanted to share with you that the ordinance is working. It's a slow process, it's a long process, but people are again getting an opportunity to at least have say-so in the plan and development of their neighborhoods, not just the shouting matches that we used to have that you all remember, Mr. Berry, about with special exception use. They were popularity contests, they were shouting matches, but they were really not anything of any substance or significance, but we have a process that's going to help these neighborhoods, and I thank you for the decisions that you made today.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any comments from the board? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month for your journey.
Hopefully, I have two more members for you next month.
Very good.